So you might as well.
Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, November 1st. These meetings are recorded. I'll take an application, excuse me, I'll take a, uh, move from John, seconded by Joe, to accept the minutes. Any further discussion, hearing not, all in favor, opposed unanimous. We have an eighty-one P planned for thirteen. Oh, sorry. Well, I was waiting for exactly at seven oh one, but.
It is now.
Before I get into the eighty-one P, there is a, uh, letter from the applicant on the special permit to construct Bear Hill Village and Bear Hill Village definitive plan. The applicant has requested a continuance until January 3rd, 2017, and that's from F and D Realty. Therefore, we'll not open the public hearing and we will grant the extension to January 3rd, 2017.
I don't think you have the vote because we didn't actually open up the meeting.
No, the hearing's not open.
We have an eighty-one P for thirteen Prairie Street.
Thank you. Subject property, at one, it was, at one time, war was two lots. And then, something happened and under common ownership and the lot line disappeared. And now, the owner is, is wants to reestablish the original lot here along Prairie Street. Leave the remaining property as, not to be considered a separate building lot. And then, as he is in the process of trying to acquire properties around the remaining area to be able to subdivide and get additional lots out of this. So basically, it's just this lot here. It meets all the requirements for the area zoning setbacks, there's an existing house on it. Twenty-two, so.
Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the eighty-one P.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Lena to approve the eighty-one P. Any further discussion, hearing not, all in favor, opposed unanimous. We're gonna do the ZBA variance for one twenty-three Congress Street, in which I will recuse myself, note my abstention.
I'll read the, uh.
It's right there. Read it, I can.
Town planner's letter. The applicant requests ZBA variance to allow for the relocation of a lot line between lots four and five to existing conforming lots currently under common ownership. Location of the house on Lot Four, the southerly lot, does not meet the side yard setback requirements from the northerly side property line. This variance will result in two lots, the new northerly lot for to be eleven thousand four hundred square feet in area and having ninety-five feet of width, fifteen thousand square feet of area and one hundred feet of width required in the RB zone. Town planner recommends favorable be sent to the zoning board of appeals.
With that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Pettenari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am Ernie Pettenari, my law office is here in Milford at twelve Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mrs. Pine. This property, for some of us, has been around a long time, used to be owned by the Hill family. The house that's on the property currently extends into what would have been the side yard requirements of the first of the two lots. The property's always been two separate lots, it has been since the Hills owned it. In order to preserve the integrity of there being two building lots now, it necessitates a variance. The family took a look at it, they took a look at it with G and H, and in deciding how to do this, it was decided that they could leave conformity on the southerly lot, in other words, the, the lot would have enough space between the side yard setback, between the side yard line and the house itself to preserve the setbacks. And then, a conforming house could be constructed on the second, the northerly lot. The only deficiencies on the northerly lot would be, it would be eleven thousand four hundred square feet and not fifteen thousand, and it would be only ninety-five feet in width, not a hundred. It's got adequate frontage, it's got everything else that'll meet zoning, and it is comparable to and consistent with many, many of the houses that have been built up there. So the request is what we would consider to be relatively de minimis, just from those two, two aspects of the zoning bylaw. And we're here tonight to ask for a referral.
Is that a single-family home that?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments from the board?
No, I recommend a favorable report be sent to the zoning board.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board, seconded by Lena. I guess I only have one other comment is, uh, and I'm not sure how we'd handle this before, but, and as Ernie said, somebody can make a conforming building within what's left there. I just wanted to make sure that, that somebody doesn't come in and ask for any other variances on that lot. Yeah.
You can, you can ask that, but the ZBA's not gonna do it.
Well, I guess, I mean, as, as far as I'm concerned, I can send whatever recommendation I want. My, my recommendation would be that no other, no other variances are granted, which I think will make for a building that would fit into the neighborhood up there fine.
And, and I think, just so we're clear, the request that's before you tonight is only for that. The request.
Right, yeah, I know that, yes. Yeah, I know, what you're showing is, is that. I'm, I'm asking that as part of that to grant this waiver that they, that they would, you know, they would put into the granting of it, that no, no further request for waiver of. I know you can't, and they usually won't, but.
I think that's.
That would be my only comment.
That's a good, that's a good point, Joe.
Makes sense, chosen.
That makes sense.
So, we'll amend that to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board, provided that no further request for waivers as part of the development of that lot is accepted. With that, uh, with that, as the motion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, a three, with one abstention.
Thank you, folks.
We have a site plan waiver for night.
Could you do them five, so we can get out of here?
Excuse me, my apologies. We have a ZBA special permit referral, forty-five Depot Street. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to construct a roof over the existing porch, attached to nonconforming structure on the subject property. The existing structure is nonconforming as to front side and rear yard setbacks, hence the need for special permit approval. No other zoning changes to the property are being proposed. Larry therefore recommends favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Ernie Pettenari, and I'm here tonight with Adam Hicks. Adam is now the proud owner and the operator of the restaurant that's situated at forty-five Depot Street, the Depot Street Tavern. You might remember approximately eight or nine months ago, we were before you, and then we were before the zoning board and the Board of Selectmen seeking to expand his operational area to include an exterior deck, offering what is known in the trade as alfresco dining, which worked really, really well while we were in the drought. And then, suddenly, when rain and inclement weather came, it's costing him money and it's impairing his investment in furniture and fixtures, et cetera, et cetera. The overall plan was originally that at some point that he was going to consider doing a new roof on the structure anyway. And as part of that plan now, he'd like your vote and the ZBA's vote to simply enclose the roof, the, the structure with a roof, no walls, still alfresco dining, still subject to the same conditions that the license and the special permit has, has placed on the property. And again, with no other changes, there's no, no anticipated change in business intensity, et cetera, et cetera. It's just to create this roof, to extend this roof, and to basically make some repairs so that it will look like that.
Is that going over the deck?
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
What are you gonna do in the wintertime when it snows?
Shovel.
That's why I put the roof.
There's no heat, there's no heat.
Well, he may, I don't know if he's gonna plan on putting outside heaters, but.
The, the argument that we have made throughout this has always been that whatever the weather would allow, there, there's obviously gonna be some limitations imposed by, by the weather. But if the question you're asking, Mr. Cook, is whether or not these will become fundamentally walls, right now, the answer's no. He's very, very, he's been very successful having this as an adjunct to the dining room, and people really do like the, the outdoor dining.
Okay.
So that's, that's the.
So it is gonna be open, just like it is now?
Like it showed here on the. Yeah, just like it's on this.
Outdoor patio, okay.
Roof on it.
And he'll be back if he wants to put walls in it.
He'll have to come back.
And again, because it's a special permit use, if he does, he has to. And that's the, that's the conundrum of the site, and, and we've talked about this in prior incarnations. Because this is a special permit use. Anytime he makes substantial repairs or improvements to the property, he's gotta come back.
He does, yes. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm just checking.
I'll vote to send a, uh.
Hold on, Joe has a question.
Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just checking, you gonna have issues with the property line, Ernie?
We shouldn't.
It's been on railroad property for a hundred years.
It's, it's a, it's a matter of public knowledge. The railroad's point of view has always been that the maintenance of the property is not gonna be a foul of them until it's a foul of them. The, the operation of the restaurant is something that is being done with full recognition of that. And Adam's here, and that's your basic word, but in terms of the property line itself, we should.
He can, building inspector can, can, can grant a building permit on, on?
The building inspector can allow him to put the roof in an area that it's shown as accessory to this, even though it's currently encroaching, because it's within the footprint of the existing building. That's not a title opinion. Let's, let's be real clear about that. That's not a title opinion.
I think you made the title opinion pretty clear. Pleasure of the board?
I'll vote to send a favorable to the ZBA.
Motion by Lena, seconded by Joe. For a favorable to the ZBA, any further discussion, hearing not, all in favor, opposed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night. We, uh, okay. We have a site plan waiver for ninety-one Medway Street. The applicant requests waiver of site plan approval to allow for a change of use on the subject premises. Specifically, the proposal is to locate a dental office in twenty-eight hundred square feet of former retail space in the Westley Building. Even though the dental use requires parking at a higher ratio than the retail uses, there is sufficient parking being provided to accommodate this change in use. After this change, however, there is only one parking space in excess of the overall requirement. No addition to the building or other changes to the site are being proposed, and all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable. Mike Dean wrote, "The supplemental of the site plan waiver for change of use, one of the smaller units associated with the larger plaza. The proposed change is to convert a twenty-eight hundred square foot rental unit to medical office use, gent, uh, excuse me, gentle dental. The site consists of fourteen point seven five acre parcel of land zone highway industrial. Assessor's map, map forty-three, block zero, lot five A. The site has recently gone through site plan approval for major renovations to the parking area and drive aisles, which is currently under the, under construction. The submitted documents were waiver of site plan application form amended site plan of land of Milford, Mass., dated October fourteenth, twenty sixteen. Following review of the above referenced documents and approval of site plan is recommended." The highway department has reviewed the above-mentioned site plan. The highway department will not be responsible for any signage of the entrance or exits of the property. We will not be responsible for the painted crosswalks at each entrance and exit of the property. Both signs and painted crosswalks will be the responsibility of the property owner. I would like to recommend a bench installation at the new, uh, MWR TA bus stop located in front of the property. The fire department has no requests. Commission.
Building commissioner.
Building, is it building commissioner? Building, okay. Uh, building commissioner has, um, no concerns. Although he was, uh, alright.
Just the title.
Yep. And then, the water company has no real concerns. Commissioner on disability has no comment.
Okay, as, as I extended his letter, this is the existing Kohl's Plaza. This area here is all being reworked under a previous site plan for. There's an existing building here, retail, twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, it's between the, right next door is the Payless, the Papaginos, it's actually got an idea where it is. And that is gonna be converted from retail use into a dental office. And there's enough parking, there was enough extra parking to compensate for the increased parking for the use, to the point where now the entire site has one extra parking space. So, any other changes within the site, that'll have to be addressed at a later date. But currently, for this use here, we have adequate parking and, uh, you know, pretty much it, no new building, it's just renovating an existing structure.
And the notes that, uh, John Erickson had about, uh, language on the plan, that's all been corrected.
Bob, real quick question. Did you give any thought to the highway surveyor's request for the bus stop in front of the property?
I would've thought that would've been the type of thing that should've come up when the entire project, you know, the entire property was.
I think at the time when the entire property came, the MWR TA, I don't think was really in the queue at the time, so I, I will say that I don't necessarily blame that on Scott Christofouli as much as, I don't think his request is that unreasonable. I just don't know if you had any discussions with him in terms of what type of bus stop he may have been looking for.
I am not aware of any discussions that were made.
Okay.
That would be the property management company.
I just thought, that was the only concern that was brought up from the packet? I'd be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge it.
Where is the bus stop?
There isn't one yet.
There is none?
Well, he wants a, he wants a structure.
A bench, he said a bench.
He said a bench, he didn't make reference to a enclosure. That's why I asked if they had any discussions, I'm not really positive what he was looking for.
I'm sure like Larry said, this is the type of thing that should be addressed to the management company that owns the plaza.
Yeah, I know, but regrettably. Regrettably for you, you're the ones in front of us and not the management company, so I hate to tell ya. That's just the luck of the draw, my friend, but anyhow. Questions from the board? Pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve the waiver of site plan.
Motion by Joe for approval of the waiver of site plan. Do I have a second from John? Any further discussion, hearing not, all in favor, opposed unanimous. Thanks, Bob.
That must be, people must stop over there, so they're looking for a place for people to sit, so the bus can pick 'em up.
Okay, we have. Yep. Excuse me.
Skip to number seven?
Why can't I just do six?
Uh, well, John's waiting. Representative Fernandez, representing number seven.
Alright, I'm gonna have to say no then, if I have to take it out of order. Just, John, John, just kidding. Just kidding. Uh, we have a ZBA special permit for eighty-five South Bow Street. The applicant requests a special permit to establish used cars sales as an additional use on the subject property. This will be in addition to general office use, solar energy company, and thirty-five hundred square feet of warehouse spacing are cut granted to occupy the site. Auto sale uses are allowed by special permits in the IA zone. The proposed used car sales business appears to be approvable generally as to use. The specific arrangements of all the off-street parking areas and number of vehicles to be displayed for sale will be determined by the planning board during the required formal site plan review subsequent to the ZBA issuance of a special permit. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable before to the zoning board of appeals. As noted above, the site plan will be, needed to be submitted at the planning board for approval.
Okay, so this is the former J Core building, the original J Core building on the corner of South Bow Street, Central Street, Railroad Street is here. The new assisted living for Blair House is located right over in here. So, the applicant is proposing, obviously, there's gonna be a, a site plan submitted that shows what the entire proposed use of the property would be, showing the, you know, necessary parking for everything and how everything's gonna lay out. But, he needs a special permit to allow for the sale of used cars, which would be, in this area here would be the, the proposed lot. Required to have four spaces, we're showing five. The entrance would be cleaned up and, and, you know, the rounding, you know, will be, will be straightened up. The existing pavement you can see is here, would create additional rounding with, with curbing. Add a, add a handicap warning plate here for the, for the walkway. There's an existing fence currently around this area that would remain to buffer the cars so that they, there'd be no attempt to drive out onto South Bow Street, there's very little sidewalk here. Pretty much that's it, we're just looking to get, uh, special permit approval for the use, but to be able to allow them to sell the used cars.
Yeah, Mr. Whitaker was actually going to come down tonight. I suggested he come a little bit later, because you seem to have a very large hearing on your agenda for tonight, but that didn't come to pass. But he purchased this building about a year ago for over three hundred thousand dollars and has invested somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interior and exterior, um, work on the building. And the next step now is the site itself, where he is, you can see the parking will be placed in the front, where Bob was talking about, but also in the back. Uh, next to Railroad Street is, is additional parking gonna be placed. So it will be back for site plan right now. The only thing that needs your attention is that recommendation to the zoning board for the use of a portion of the lot for used car sales. And, again, what he's, he's making a significant investment in there, in this area, to clean up this spot. He even matched the siding up to the property across the street, so it would look the same coming down. So he's being very thoughtful about it, but he needs to be able to get a return on that investment. And the used car sales would be one of the opportunities to do that. And there's an office right there in the L that would be available for administration. And he does intend to either use the fence there, or he's actually thinking of something a little more decorative across that area to both protect the cars from the public, these people walking by, as well as to assure that they didn't get off the property.
It's a pretty tight area.
It's a tight area, but, you know, the site has always been tight, and he's just, you know, the, the rest of the site is office space and warehouse, so it's not a heavy use. So, there should be plenty of parking there, there's not a lot of people there during the day because it's warehouse use, so there should be plenty of parking for anybody that comes to look at the, the cars. And as Larry has pointed out, when we get closer into site plan for the December meeting, we can identify just how many cars can go in that space and.
I noticed they put the sidewalk back.
They put the sidewalk.
They put a sidewalk back there, I noticed that, I come around that way to come up.
Yeah, they have.
And that makes it even tighter, 'cause you don't have that room.
Well, the, yeah, this, but, you know, sidewalks, slow traffic, they're, they're good for safety purposes. And they haven't finished that sidewalk, and they did leave the curb cut in the back, where it's necessary for the parking to come out over there, so, um, that's, that's part of the planning. I talked to Larry today about that, as well as Scotty, and, and Scott and Paul left that space open, so the curb cut could be arranged at that location.
Thank you.
So we're asking for favorable consideration.
Questions from the board? Pleasure of the board?
Vote to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Motion by Joe, seconded by Lena for a favorable to the ZBA, any further discussion, hearing not, all in favor, opposed unanimous.
Just the guy.
John, for the record, laying that on Larry. Because, you know what, if I kept on schedule, you know what, you wouldn't fit, you wouldn't feel, you wouldn't feel slightly embarrassed right now.
We didn't have the meeting. Public hearing was canceled.
There you go.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Continue, Bob.
Go back to number six?
Yes, I am. Number six. ZBA special permit referral for one fifty-one, one fifty-nine East Main Street. The applicant requests a special permit to establish an attendant service gasoline station convenience store, an additional retail store on the subject property. Attendant service gasoline stations are allowed by special permits in the CC zone. The proposed attendant service gasoline station seems to be approvable generally as to use. The specific arrangement of all the proposed uses, site plan and off-street parking will be reviewed by the planning board during the regular or required formal site plan review subsequent to the ZBA issuance of the special permit. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA.
If I'm not mistaken, in Milford, don't you have to have an attendant?
Yes. That's more of a formality.
But they're all special permit, all auto-related uses are special permit.
Okay, so this, this is the property on East Main Street, South Street is here, Hamilton Street is here. Across the street was the former Chevy dealership, which is now World Jim is in there now. And currently on the, on the property, there are, there's an existing house, the existing building that was the music house. And then, uh, the applicant actually owns this lot as well. So, the proposal is to raise these two buildings, keep this, this two-family, and then construct a gas station convenience store with a retail building. This is, would be the canopy for the pumps, there'd be four pump islands. And then, we would then take these, these four, one, two, three, four curb openings that you have here, and we reduce them down to one single curb cut. And we would actually, the access to this two-family house would become, would be part of the, um, the proposed site. There'd be an easement here. The op, the idea is to, uh, he's, the applicant is currently working with the owners of this plaza here to allow the connection through, so we would have an actual connection into the, to the, the other plaza as well.
Could you just tell me where, why, why, I, I don't know where exactly this is that you're talking.
Cross from Imperial Chevrolet.
Music house, across from the old Chevrolet.
Right across from Chevrolet is the old Chevrolet.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know where the Verizon, the AluPhon is, right on the side of them?
Okay.
Same side of the road.
I'm just trying to figure it out where it is, now.
I think it's basically an asphalt lot right now.
It is an asphalt lot, yes. It used to be cars on there, right?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
So, we're just, so because the, um, the proposed use of a gas station is, need to be approved by special permit, we're here to try to get a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. And we will be coming in with site plan review with everything on site, drainage, grading.
Is that near the Pagucci house? Is that next to the Pagucci home?
Yes, this is, the Pagucci home is this one.
Right, is that gonna be raised, is that?
Pagucci home is coming down, and then the, um, the music house is coming down.
Oh, okay, the big yellow, oh, alright, okay. And what's the house standing?
Allegri?
Okay.
Is it, they all, they have a P, P and with I, it's like, uh, a hundred.
It's the house right aside of the entrance, basically, the Hannafords.
Right next to it.
I think there's a couple of collection boxes to the right of their home.
Okay.
If that gives you any visual.
I know, I know, I know, I know now. I just wanted to.
It used to be years ago, so I'm just trying to help her with the visual.
Thank, thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate this, but I think this is a horrible idea, just for the record, but.
I agree.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you did.
Awful idea.
I appreciate you. Questions from the board? Any questions from the board, pleasure of the board then?
Make a motion to send a favorable to the zoning board?
Motion made by Joe.
Yeah, I'll second that, we're coming back, we're coming back.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of favorable? Opposed to favorable?
I oppose it.
Okay, so we have a two to two. Basically, a no vote, but what do you want from me, that's how the vote shook.
Well, that's. They just need a recommendation, it doesn't matter what it is.
You know, I mean, this'll be the, this'll be like the only gas station on this side of the street.
And I still think it's a horrible idea, I think the traffic is jetted over there, and I think it's, I think you're just asking for trouble, but that's just me. That's just me, Bob.
Something's gonna be built there.
That's right, Bob, but I prefer it not to be a gas station. That's just me.
Right. I, I, I just can't see that happening with all that traffic coming and going out of there.
Yeah, exactly.
It was a two to two, I'm not gonna sit here and coerce somebody to either vote favorable or unfavorable. That's how it shook. I'm fine with that. It really doesn't much matter.
They gotta come back here anyway, if, if they.
Oh, assuming they get a.
They, special permit, they'll give it to them anyway. They've special permit, they'll give it to them anyway.
Thank you. Is this one yours too, Bob?
Oh, yeah.
Another used car dealership, huh?
And finally, seventy-six East Main Street. The applicant requests a special permit to establish used car sales as an additional use on the subject property. This will be in addition to the auto and truck repair use currently occupied on the site. Auto sale uses are allowed by special permit in the CB zone. Proposed car, used car sales business appears to be approvable generally as to use. Specific arrangements of all off-street parking and the number of vehicles to be displayed on site will be determined by the planning board during the required formal site plan review subsequent to the ZBA issuance of the special permit. However, it must be noted that the property is subject to an activity and use limitation as per MGL section twenty-one E subsection six and three-ten CMR forty point zero zero due to petroleum contamination that had occurred on the site prior to nineteen ninety-five and from the former bus company garage use. Therefore, any changes proposed within the U.A.U.L. area must first be analyzed by a licensed site professional, who must then prepare and publish an evaluation indicating their proprietary or not of such proposed uses. Until such time or proper analysis and evaluations are completed, as noted above, the expanded auto display area being proposed beyond the existing pavement cannot be considered as this area is within the A.U.L. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA. As noted, the site plan will need to be submitted to the planning board for approval.
Okay, so this is the former Midas Mupla location, kind of across, diagonally across from Levis. And the applicant, obviously, existing building is here, so as well as using this to repair in vehicles, he's also looking to be able to sell used cars. The area for used car sale is shown here in the hatched area. He's proposing landscaping along, along East Main Street, a little bit along Mead Street. There's some existing back in here. A dumpster is here. So, basically, it's just, it's just for the use, to be allowed to do the used car sales. And he will be coming in with a, with a site plan for the change, the additional use.
Does the garage across the street from that sell cars?
What's that?
There's a garage across the street from that, or?
I think it's a little further up the road.
It's quite a ways down East Main Street this way.
It's not that far, but it's up the road.
By Cook Street, is it?
Quarter mile left.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you said quite a ways, I mean.
Well, on the opposite side of the street, yes.
But that's good for the, that's good for the gas station.
Wasserman, I think that's Wasserman, that's that one, that way.
Yeah, it's a ways.
Bob, this will be the only car dealership on that side?
On that side of the street. Thank you, Pat, thank you for bringing that up. It's good.
That's a plus.
Now, to stick on theme.
Don't encourage him.
Should be questions from the board? The pleasure of the board.
Go ahead, John, you do it. Hopefully, you'll go home and watch the game.
Oh, that's the last one, John, I'm waiting for somebody.
A move to approve it.
Motion by John for favorable. Do I have a second on the favorable? Favorable by Joe, any further discussion, here or not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Any other business, hearing not?
What do you got?
An informal, if you wanna take it, otherwise.
A little informal, so, what's that?
No.
Huh?
You asked next.
Waiting for the bus, you know, the kids waiting for the bus at Zane Circle, you know, that little thing.
Oh, alright.
Let me take a look quickly. The operative word is quickly. Also, we decided to do a cut through.
So, obviously, we, you know, realize that this, this, yeah, what it's doing.
Sandoni, no, is that the wrong one?
Was it?
Arpino.
Arpino, yes.
What's his name?
Ron Arpino. Sort of spearheading this attempt, trying to, the thought is that they're saying that the kids, when the people drive up and for their kids to get on the bus, they tend to park along here, and it restricts the flow of traffic, and they're in the side of the road. So, what we've looked at is proposing this turnarout, this turnout lane coming in here where cars can park. A small building here for, and it's an eight by fifteen building. It's a, just a, it's a shed for them to stand in, a bus stop.
It's a bus shelter.
Is it open, Bob? Meaning that it's transparent?
Yes, yes, it's a bus shelter. And, that's, that's it, you know, just, we show the grading.
What we've been looking at was to have.
Hold your thought for a second. If I were to be parked in this, I guess, cutout?
Yeah.
I could, I could easily maneuver myself with the radius to cut back down and head back home?
Yes, yes.
I'm just making sure.
And there's a travel, there's a, there's a through lane to go by cars too that are parked, so.
But, this is really only designed for, for the use of the bus. I mean, for the use of the.
People in the, in the.
It's not really a drive.
No, no, it's just for there, for the condominium association.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna play with, just out of curiosity, if we're gonna play with the concept of safety, why would you want it to be a double lane? Do you have that many vehicles that need to be queued, I suppose? Because again, I'm going on the concept that, you know, what he initially told us was that kids were gonna get hit. So, if you're gonna have like a, you know, a pass-through, then it really doesn't accomplish anything.
Well, the idea is.
Finish my thought for a second, Bob. And the other thing, is the pink?
That's a sidewalk.
Okay, so.
This is a sidewalk.
On both sides are we doing it?
Well, just this side, this is a sidewalk.
Why do I highlight the other side?
That's the edge of, that's, well, the pink's the edge of it right away, this is a little bit darker color.
Okay, but I'm looking at my, I'm sorry, Bob, because I'm watching my.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't know.
Pink on both, that's why.
I didn't, I didn't highlight that.
Trying to understand what you're doing here.
So, so this is, this is just the edge of pavement, and this is a sidewalk.
Is seventy the first unit?
Well, first unit is one here.
Okay, but.
One, two.
On the sidewalk side, in theory, seventy?
Yes, seventy would be the first unit, that's correct.
I guess, why wouldn't you run the sidewalk all the way down to seventy?
Well, there are no other sidewalks.
No, I understand that, and that's part of our problem, or part of his problem.
Yeah, so basically, we just brought it into the rounding and just, and dead it, end it at the rounding. You gotta end it somewhere, rather than have people, I don't know, that's just the way the design came out.
And how many vehicles is this queue? I know the way you stacked them is.
Nine. Nine vehicles within this area here.
And that's why there's a pass.
That's why there's a pass-through, because if.
Because that's not enough. And, and there isn't enough room on the site to build a bump out to queue all of them.
Okay, so, how does this really rectify his initial complaint that kids were gonna be traveling in and around vehicles? I mean, if you're gonna have a pass-through. No, 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 you're not.
Get out on the sidewalk and walk up.
Right, right, the idea is to have them either be in the car or walk the sidewalk to the, to the bus stop.
Right, and I guess another way of doing this is having them put a sidewalk throughout on at least one side of their property, and tell parents not to bring their kid up. You could do it that way, too. I'm just saying.
They all wanna drive their kid up and sit there and wait for the bus.
But I'm trying to go back to his initial complaint of cars and pedestrians specifically to kids. And I don't know how this accomplishes any better of a result than what you previously, or what you presently have.
It gets the cars off the street, off of the private way, it gets them into the drop off.
Gets them off their own theoretic, it gets them off their own theoretic street, which they pay a condo.
But there are a lot of.
They pay a condo fee.
There's a lot of traffic on the street besides the people who.
No, I'm just, he's coming in here informally, I'm asking the questions, I'm not gonna fight with you.
No, but he's just, he's just reporting what.
And I get that, but.
Elizabeth and I came up with as a way to try to address his concern.
But I don't know if you did address his concern, based on if you recall what his initial concern was.
Well, then there's no reason to keep talking about it, have him come back next time.
But the original concern had to do with the cars being in the, the traveled way, with cars coming in and out, that had nothing to do with cars letting off their kids. This is specifically for people who wanna let, leave their kids off. They're not gonna, they're not, you know, they're gonna get out on this side of the car, go to the sidewalk and go to the bus stop, while cars who are entering, people who are going in back and forth to work or whatever, are still traveling this road thirty feet away from where these cars are parked.
And once the bus is there, everybody stops.
Well, the bus is out in the street. So, are the kids gonna stand in, 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 in the shelter, or they're gonna sit with their parents?
Some of them are gonna sit with their parents, some of them are gonna stand in the shelter. I would imagine it's gonna depend on the weather and time.
I don't know either, I, I couldn't tell you.
I would imagine there's some people who are gonna pull up, let their kids out, they're gonna go stay in the shelter, and they're gonna go to work. Others are gonna stay there with their children. I mean, I can see a lot of these, in these neighborhoods where they designate a parent that stays with the kids and they.
Wait a second, wait, let's back up to the whole purpose of doing this informally in two minutes. The purpose was for the concept itself, whether it was something that you would be amenable to look at, at, when it's finalized. The idea of looking at it now, beyond that, was to relay to you the dimensional requirements of trying to satisfy what he claimed he wanted to do, which was to have a place for the kids to get out, walk up and wait for the bus. So, the only way I can see that, that this board ought to be entertaining something like this if it meets those minimal dimensional requirements that Elizabeth Minetti and I came up with to do the design that Bob got stuck presenting. So, he wasn't involved in this at all, and if you're gonna have a turnaround like that, the very first thing you ask is the very first thing we told him, Arpino, that he would need to do to make this work. And that's why that median that separates the bump-out aisle from Zane Circle is as wide as it is, because that gives you the proper turning radius. So, if you wanna come out of that and go back down to your house, you can make that turn. Obviously, if you wanna come out of that and leave the site, you can easily make that turn.
Is, let me step back. Couple thousand yards here. Is this coming from him, or is this coming from the, the directors of Zane Ridge?
Well, primarily from Arpino.
Well, until it comes from Zane Ridge, I don't even wanna think about it, how's that? As far as I'm concerned.
So, we need a letter from the board.
I mean, yeah, unless it comes from the board, I could kill this. I, I got, I got one person complaining in Zane Ridge, just like I've heard other people complaining about whether they're gonna have sidewalks or not down, down on eighty-five, it means nothing.
Before he comes.
There's no use in us wasting our time, if, yeah, he needs to get a hundred percent vote of Zane Ridge, that they're gonna spend the money to do this. I'm not wasting my time till he wastes his time getting a hundred percent of Zane Ridge to say they wanna do this.
You're right, Joe.
Is that informal enough?
Then we can look at it.
Is that informal enough?
That was terrific, alright.
Any other business in front of the board? I'll take a motion from Joe to adjourn, seconded by Lena. Thank you, and good night.
Good night.